Just a reminder, it's recorded.
Do you hear Pam?
And it is recorded, yes.
Thanks. Dan, you sent us the completed bridge project on Wright Road, some pictures. And it's nice to see the results of our Act 13 funds being put to good use. I appreciate the update.
I think it's a success project.
Great.
Dave, I emailed Dan and asked if you could come up and just go over.
To kind of give you a brief overview back in November, the commissioners had approved allocating about $57,000 of Act 13 structural and vision bridge funding to this project. And we worked with Clay Township and their bridge engineer on all of the finalizing paperwork and so forth. The design was done by the engineering firm. Can't recall off the top of my head. But-
ADM welding.
ADM welding built it, yeah. But the engineer developed here in County. They submitted all of the inspection reports and so forth, which I've forwarded on down to Pendon at District 1 in Oahu City. And those were then forwarded on to Harrisburg Central Office at Pendon. And approval was granted at that time to utilize the funding for that. It did meet the conditions of that use of the funds. And so what I sent you this morning were the photographs of the finished product. These were taken by the engineer. He's going over all of the specifications from the contract that Clay had with ADM welding to make sure that all the things that they were supposed to do were indeed completed on that project. And once that is signed off by the engineer, the township will submit a copy of the invoice for the project, and then the county will reimburse the township for the green amounts out of the Act 13 fund. This is actually the first project that we've done through that funding source. And I'm extremely pleased with how well it turned out. We do have a couple of other municipalities that are considering requesting funding as well.
That's great. Glad to hear that.
Were there any prefabricated items used in this, like the way?
They built the bridge off-site at ADM's facility and then brought it to the location and set it in place. And then the township crews finished up the balance of the installation.
I was just wondering if any of the Pendons located or prefabricated material could be used on it, because I was just curious about.
Yeah, no, there were no Pendon materials that were provided in this project here. When the inspection was done of the substructure, which would be the abutments, it was determined that they were in good condition and could be reused. So that definitely helped with the cost of the project. Just the superstructure itself that had to be replaced.
Great.
Yeah, thank you for bringing the pictures to us so we could see. It looks like a, it's, it looks like a nice bridge.
It did. It looked nice. What was the cost of the bridge?
It was $56,979.
And what portion of that was Act 13 again?
All of it, wasn't it?
Well, that $56,000 was the Act 13 money. There were additional expenses above that that the township covered.
Which was like all of the manual-
All of the engineering, side of thing, permitting and all that sort of thing.
And what was that figure, do you know? Wasn't it about $2,000 if there was left unfunded type of some other project or something?
Yeah, $1,500. $1,500 that the township had obligated to the project.
Great.
So in the end, we had a $58,005 complete project. This is on a locally owned bridge. That funding can be used for locally owned structures in Warren County. All of our locally owned bridges are owned by the municipalities and not by the county.
Great, thanks, Dan. Anyone have any questions for Dan?
What's the lifespan? How long will this one last?
Hopefully 100 years. Hopefully none of us around this table are worried about replacing it. Nice thing about this too is there are no weight limit restrictions on this particular bridge here because of how it is built.
Oh, that's good.
And there's a lot of logging activities that go on out in that area of the township. So this will be more than adequate to support that kind of traffic.
Great.
Good. All right. I want to bring to the attention of the board that I have received an agreement from our solicitor, John Shreeb, yesterday via email in regard to Triumph Township for their loan from the county for their fire funds. That agreement is in place, ready to go. So I will send that over to Pam for her to copy that onto our letterhead and for signatures to get out to Triumph Township to come back to us for us at our next commissioners' meeting for approval. Just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. Also, I understand we're having an issue with our website in regard to right-to-know requests. And I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the public in case they've submitted any right-to-know requests that haven't been responded to timely. We are working on that to fix that.
Yeah, that's been fixed. There were eight submissions that Pam didn't get, and so in the past three weeks. So Pam's been forwarded those submissions, she's responded to them. And the problem right now, we're monitoring it, but it seems to have been fixed. So we should be, we should be good to go.
I'm wondering if maybe we need to look at how we have our right-to-know requests submitted to the county. You know, just out of transparency reasons, maybe we need to allow our citizens to be able to download the form, complete it, and bring it into our right-to-know officer, who is Pam.
They can do that through the website now.
So, I know, but are they submitting it online as well?
They can submit it online as well.
That's what I'm saying. Maybe we should stop doing that. And maybe they should have to either send it into our right-to-know officer via mail or bringing it in and handing it to her in person so that situations like this won't arise in the future. We do have a timely situation on our hands with right-to-know. And should, this would prevent that from happening in the future.
Yeah, I mean, every technical system that you have is going to have a glitch in it from time to time. I mean, there's no way around that. So this is, you know, caught up very quickly. Bill, Pam, and I are all aware of the situation and will continue to monitor. Shouldn't be an issue going forward.
Okay. I would like to request that if you're going to continue keeping the right-to-know requests submitted, submittal process online, that not only our right-to-know officer gets a copy of that, but all three commissioners.
Yes, that's fine. If you change that.
And if it is a matter of the public wishing to submit a right-to-know request to a commissioner, say the right-to-know request is involving the commissioners, then of course, they should then bring it in person to our right-to-know officer. Or if it's in regard to our right-to-know officer, can you bring it in to the commissioner?
Yeah, we can, currently the right-to-know form goes to Pam, and then it goes to the info@warren-county.com address, which is addressed to me, Cindy, and Bill. I can change that to include Ben Cafflin in that email address as well. And so that all future requests are sent to everybody.
I think that's a good idea. I think we are-
I might suggest that we not change anything just yet until we get the right-to-know request, the right-to-know policy altered. It doesn't really make sense to be modifying something this week. And then in a few weeks, you know, having the whole system looked over by legal counsel in order to make sure that we're up to date on the policy and then have to change things again.
You may recall, either the last work session or the prior work session, I had made mention of contacting the open records office at the state and requesting that one of them send either a delegate from that office or arrange for a teleconference for our right-to-know officer, the commissioners, and maybe our directors in the county to all be brought in and to know what the policy actually is regarding the state law so that we have a very good understanding of what that policy is and draft a more updated version of our right-to-know policy here in the county. I'm very concerned with the situation that just took place, and I would like to work on that. I hope that you would all be in agreement to entertain that idea of having someone from the state brief us on those policies and our directors so that they can better answer the questions that come to their office by way of our right-to-know request so that they're informed and they have the information that they need to have in order to fulfill the law.
I have no problem with meeting with the right-to-know officer from the open records office at the state. We're drafting the right-to-know request policy now. I would be more than happy to share all whatever info we put together with Commissioner Morrison.
Who's drafting that?
Me and the solicitor, John Shreeb.
Well, I think it's really important that we consult with the open records office at the state. There are updates that have been made to the law, and I think it's really important that we follow it by the letter of the law.
I'd be more than willing to work collaboratively with Commissioner Morrison to work on this. She obviously has already contacted the office so that she can work with them in order to get a meeting scheduled to take a look at that.
Okay, great. Happy to hear you say that. All right. As far as, we're kind of jumping around here on this agenda. We've kind of jumped into our own personal projects and such, but we can backtrack to new items. But I did want to say that I really don't have anything new to add in regard to my ongoing projects. I'm still working on them. I have no committee updates because I had no committee meetings last week. I will be attending the cooperative extension, Penn State Cooperative Extension Board Meeting this evening at 6:30. Other than that, I have nothing further to report. And Commissioner Eggleston, since I'm here at this point in our agenda, if you want to share where you're at on your projects, and then we'll move up to new items of discussion.
We had several items on the agenda for review. I'd be happy to go through those first.
Okay. All right, Absorb Tech Agreement. This is the first I've seen this.
Absorb Tech is the company that brings our rugs in.
Oh, okay. The mats, like at the front door and such?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They do it here and they do it at Domestic Relations, but they also-
In the jail.
They're not down yet, so.
No.
What did you ask?
They do mats here, they do them at Domestic Relations too.
Okay, it says Delivery, Dillow Drive, Yumso. So is that at-
It must have something down there too.
In the jail.
I didn't know whether they were at, I couldn't remember from the invoices whether they were at 911 or not. Should we have that altered until we are back in the building at DHS? Excuse me, Domestic, not DHS.
Domestic Relations.
Domestic Relations.
Yeah.
Are we paying for a service for rugs without people there? Or do we have enough workers going in and out down there working on things that we need them there?
No, and the bill should be adjusted. When the bill comes in, you should see how many is going to each building.
Okay, so then do they just curtail what they're dropping off and picking up? We've told them we're not working, so they're not getting in and out, just picking up clean rugs?
They can't get in, yeah. The building is locked. They can't get in and out.
All right.
Okay.
I know Bondit was suggesting, but I didn't know if they work.
Customer agrees to a minimum charge of $15 per delivery. And then it says, customer agrees to $10.95 environmental stewardship charge with each delivery. So am I to understand it's $25.95 with each delivery?
That is my understanding.
Do we know how many carpets there actually are? And how many times they deliver a year?
Twice a month, I believe. Is that when they come in?
I truly don't know, because I've never, this is the first being down here that I've been in an office where they, they take the little ones just inside the door, right? It's the first I've been, so I don't know. Do you want an invoice pull?
Yeah, I'd like to look at that. You don't have to do it right now. I can look at it this week.
I'll copy and send it on, I'll give you whatever we got for the last one or two of them.
Okay, thank you. And then this is something we'll be voting on at our public meeting. Great.
I know they do the ones at the main entrance, and then as soon as you get up the top of the steps, there's another one over there. They replace that one.
The only one that they don't replace that we own is this one in this hallway.
Okay. All right. Advanced Disposing Agreement, Rouse Annex Building. It seems pretty cut and dried. $66.15 monthly charge. One trash container. Okay. And then liquid fuels.
It's that time of the year again to figure out how much we're going to disperse in total to the municipalities. The first sheet is a total of $140,000 with $40,000 being marked for projects, which has never been used. We've never been able to find anybody.
That is kind of an emergency fund, isn't it?
Yes. And the Wright Road Bridge is the first one out of the Act 13 monies.
Okay.
So if we would go with $140,000, and I estimated what our bridge inspections are going to cost, how much we're going to get reimbursed for that, how much we're going to get from the state for our liquid fuels, we would have a balance of like $255 at the end of 2017. Which is, I mean, that's okay, except we can't go, the balance in the account, even though we earmarked it for projects, can't go over 50% of what we received.
Okay.
So which was like $170,000 last year. The second one is taking the $140,000 but remove the project, which would give us then $40,000, $255. The third sheet is remove the project. Because in four or five years, nobody has ever even inquired about that. Increase our amount to $155,000, which would give them more for the year that we would give them out of our liquid fuels. You know, so take that $40,000, and they have the Act 13 if they have an emergency. So then we can give them a little more during the year to put towards their projects.
And if they give you a revised mile info, mile distribution, municipality, are we still using the same one that we have?
Still using what we used last year.
It says $194.55, is that correct? And then it went to $219.05? At the top?
The per capita and the per mile, yeah. The per capita stays the same. The per mile changes as you increased your amount of distribution. Your per mile will change. And then that's one, how they get, for instance, Broken Straw would get, instead of the $8,123, it would go up to the $9,027.
Right.
So they have the Act 13 monies for emergencies, so maybe we need to just take a look at giving them more money throughout the year with their distribution. So once we know which way the commissioners want to go, I can get the resolution ready for Wednesday's meeting.
All right. I would like to look at this and study this a little more.
Could I ask a question about liquid fuels purely because of talking with that man about the allocations, not software, but the allocations contracted Domestic Relations look like the county to consider. Are you keeping anything for admin fees out of liquid fuels?
I- Every time I work on liquid fuels, I do a times, time sheet, and then I add up the hours times my hourly rate, and then we build that to the liquid.
Build that into liquid fuels?
Yep.
Is that how they, is that how liquid fuels requires it to be done?
I don't know that that's how they require it to be done because we don't have to do an admin fee.
Okay.
But usually it's a couple hundred dollars that goes back into the general fund.
Okay.
What do you mean, you don't have to do an admin fee?
They don't have to.
It's not required, but you, you are, we are eligible to take that?
Yes.
And we have a percentage?
It's not a percentage, it's on how many hours you put into it. And that's why I keep a time, a time slip.
All right.
Okay.
It's not a percentage? Are we, we're not allowed a percentage?
I don't know.
Okay, because that's, I was just wondering if, being the greedy fiscal person that I am, I was just wondering if the county was getting the maximum for its budget that they could out of that. Because I was under the impression it was a 10% that we could get out of what comes in in liquid fuels.
That I don't know.
Because if we're not getting the maximum for administering these funds, I mean, we need to do everything we can to get it. If, I was, I haven't seen this in writing, so I'm going verbally on what I was told by this man who oversees allocations for other areas. And he gave me the impression it was a 10%.
Maybe it's up to a maximum of 10%. If you tracked her hours and rate, it could be up to a maximum of 10%.
Well, I'd like to see how it's worded. I want to get what we're allowed to get.
Well, we can, we can pull that out and we through it and see if we can find that. All right. We'll do that.
Even if you're just taking your hourly rate, are you doing a social security match on top of that too, or anything? Or are you just flat out taking hourly and that's it?
I take hourly, and that's gross wages, and that's what we-
Okay, because I'm, I'm flat out on gross wages, you have employers' costs for social security on top of that. So I'm just trying to maximize all reimbursement to the most, to the most we can.
Any other questions on liquid fuels? All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is capital budget. Ben, do you have that list of priorities for our capital budget? Do you have that prepared?
It's in a pile on my desk. I did not email it around, no.
Okay.
And I'm not going to be able to do anything about it this week, so.
Okay. Well, maybe we could have that for our next work session?
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. All right, I guess that's it for our new items of discussion. I've already given you my rundown. Commissioner Eggleston, if you'd like to go next?
I've got nothing to say.
Okay. Commissioner Cafflin, do you have anything to add?
Can you tell me what some of my projects were on that list?
High-tech incubator. Procedures with-
Yeah, Jim Decker and I have continued to work together on fleshing out that proposal. And met again with the city last week about it. Still looking at several different properties around the county, so still an ongoing project. In terms of work instructions, no update. However, we did try out the first eye tracker thing last week. Needed some modifications, so still a work in progress. What were the other projects?
Eye tracker, satisfaction-
Right.
Maintenance hazmat overhaul.
Oh, yeah, the hazmat, the doors are in and installed, so that's great. The LETC hazmat unit should be moving into their new digs soon, if they haven't already over the weekend. So that's great.
Then you have fiscal code, long-term capital economic plan, 10-year plan, school resource officer. I mean, we all kind of were updated on that at our meeting Friday.
Yep.
Procedures and WI.
That's work instructions. So, yeah, so I don't have a whole lot of faith in Ben on those besides what I just gave. And then for board meetings, I don't think there were any last week. This Friday, I have a Northwest Commission meeting. But that should be it.
All right. Will you be at the workforce meeting?
It's kind of up in the air at this point. Kind of depends on if I'd like to get in early or not.
Okay. Jeff, do you have any meetings this week? Committee meetings?
I have plenty of meetings.
Committee meetings, though?
Other than the Ross Board, I don't believe so. The Cog.
All right. Any of you have anything to add?
I'm sorry.
I emailed all three of the commissioners with a couple of budget adjustments that need to be made if we're going to formally amend the budget. Are we going to do that at this week's meeting? They were in relation to, two were errors on the spreadsheet and rolling numbers forward.
We shouldn't have a meeting this week. We would do it at the next meeting.
Oh, next, I'm sorry. You're right, there isn't one this week.
I think we should discuss them on Monday. Ben, are you going to be here Monday?
Yep.
Okay, so we should discuss them on Monday.
I just found out one more today. I think I emailed all three of you about it, and that was with allocations going to children and youth. Transposition error, I don't know if it's mine, if it's who brought the numbers into, to it, doesn't matter. It's a whole $18. It's one of the categories, it should have been $20. It says, it should have been $84,420, it said $84,402. So we're looking for $1.49 more this month than what they got.
Sounds excessive.
All right. Ed?
Prior to the beginning of the year, there was a discussion on how overtime was being looked at, how comp time was being looked at. Then it got pushed back. I think the last, last thing said was it got pushed back to March.
The law changed, I believe. I don't believe that we're required to look at that at this point.
Okay. Last I heard was it got pushed back to March.
Yeah.
There is a stay by effect of judge, and they're still looking at it. And it's difficult to say with the new administration how it's going to shake out, and maybe the other, either way, it hasn't been implemented.
I highly doubt that we'll see that.
I don't, I agree with you. But the other thing that was being discussed is, are we going to continue to do our comp time the same way that we have been doing it? Or there was discussion on, there was going to be something put in writing on how we were doing that, and I didn't know if that was being done there or not.
I don't think that there's been any formal change made to that, so I would suggest continuing as you've always conducted your overtime and comp time. Of course, you can offer the comp time, but they don't have to accept that. And if they are working overtime, we would have to pay them overtime rate. But until you see something forward from us, just continue as is. Phil, do you have any- Phil, do you have any questions?
No. No.
All right, Stacy? Questions?
Jeff, did you get an email or did it not make it to you from Ruth Bollman, the extension office with classes? Is that on her website? I mentioned it to Pam and she said she didn't think so.
I'll take a look.
Okay. Because that's, one of them is that food service class that they offer that the restaurants have to have and our staff at the jail have to have, too. We've been sending people to state college for this. And if it can be offered locally, if they get a high enough enrollment, that would be better for a lot. But I know she sent just recently a listing of classes. I have the email. If you don't have it, I can forward it to you.
I would forward it to me just in case. Like I'll check that I've forwarded to.
You're referring to the food safe?
It was a combination of things. Food safety, she had a class for if you're planning on running for office or some type of election class. I shouldn't say she, these are run from Penn State. But they're coordinated through Ruth down at the office.
I did see that. All right. Okay, anything further? All right. This meeting's adjourned.